I'd like to ask everyone to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing to honor all those serving across the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. They took one of our chairs. I'll put my glasses on so I can see what I'm saying. Once again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting of May 2, 2018. I have Robert Anzalone to my right, to my left we have Sandra Capiglione, Chris Chabelli, Rich Catagio, Secretary Galnogal. All the way to the far table, we have our engineer, Dennis Lindsay, and our attorney, Kelly Norton. And I'm your chairperson, Maria Hunter. Board members, have you had a chance to review the minutes from April 18, 2018? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And just a note for the -- on April 16, I presume everyone received a copy of the introductory local law number five. Dennis, I'm sure you received a copy of that from Kelly Norton, our attorney, and we'll have to make sure we put that on the agenda for next meeting so we can review that for the Village Board. Okay, first item on the agenda, we have Gentco, review resolution for site plan, special permit and ARB of proposed seven-unit residential complex on vacant property. Said property is located in the HB zoning district at 6th and 8th, Falkirk Avenue in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 231, block 3, lots 6.1 and 6.2. And just for the record, yesterday, Dennis Lindsay, myself, Gary Thomasberger, Michael Morganti, one of the owners of the property, and the neighbors from either side of the property, we met and we did a brief site visit. And I'm sure, Michael, you're going to tell us about that.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Morganti. I'm the project engineer for this application. It's before the planning board, which is currently proposing seven townhouse-style units. Just a brief overview of the project, it's located on Falkirk Avenue near the intersection of Smith-Clove Road. The site will be served by municipal water and sewer. We've got 20 parking spaces that are shown currently on the site to serve the seven buildings. We have a stormwater management system in the rear of the property. There's also a retaining wall that's proposed at the rear of the property that will be enclosed with a split-rail fence. That split-rail fence will also have wire mesh associated with it to provide further protection from any adolescents or anyone who might travel near that area and potentially get through the split rails. So that's a general overview of the project. At our site visit, our site meeting was prompted predominantly at the public hearing by concern for potential flooding associated with the parcel. So when we had the site visit yesterday, we took a look at the areas of concern for potential flooding. In particular, there was concern it's a portion of the floodway might actually cross through the site. This updated set of plans that you see before you, we actually did take a look at FEMA maps, and we did plot what the FEMA maps show as the floodway for the parcel, which is shown in the rear of the property outside of the extents of the proposed retaining wall. Our understanding from discussing the flooding areas with the neighbors that were concerned was that essentially alongside buildings 4, 5, 6, and 7, and this, we'll call it a little alleyway back here, there has been situations in the past where water has risen in that area. To the best of our understanding during that site meeting yesterday, there was no water that actually traverses or crosses any portion of the site where the development is actually occurring, as opposed to potentially water may just rise within that area. So our concern that the development might be potentially located within a historical floodway, not an actual mapped floodway by FEMA, but potentially a historical floodway that neighbors might have information on that might not be shown on FEMA maps, is not an issue here. So during that site visit meeting, not only did we come up with that information that we are not in a floodway and that we have only some issues with potential rising waters behind 4, 5, 6, and 7, but we also took a look at potentially shifting the site to the west a little bit to provide a little bit more of a, I guess we'll call it, a side yard between buildings 4 and 7. And so we went back to the office, took a look at that, and have actually shifted the entire project over to the west by about four feet. So our current side yard right now between 4, 5, 6, and 7 and the neighboring property line is approximately 15 feet. As a result of shifting the buildings, the entire site, I should say, to the west about four feet, we'll probably need to, well, not probably, but almost definitely need to relocate. There's an existing utility pole that's currently shown on the site that's just in the, I guess, northwestern corner of the proposed entrance. So unfortunately now, that'll need to be relocated. I've spoken to the owners, they were willing to accommodate that. And so, again, to summarize, we shifted the site to the right about four feet, the entire, I guess, proposed development by about four feet, so we have a side yard of about 15 feet now. We are confident that there is no floodway that traverses the property. And we also discussed some additional screening between buildings 4 and 7 and the adjacent neighbors, such that we'll have a four-foot-tall fence with 50% openings included between the front property line and the beginning of building 4, because essentially that's a front yard, and that's what the village code requires. And between buildings 4 and 7, we will provide a six-foot-tall, solid vinyl fence there to provide some additional privacy and screening between the neighbors and the subject buildings on the site that'll connect back around to building 7. And then, just to reiterate, from building 7, all the way around the retaining wall and connecting back to building 1 will be a split-rail fence that will have some, I guess, like a chicken-type wire mesh between the rails for just added safety precautions. So that pretty much summarizes the site visit that we had the other day and the purpose of the site visit based on some of the concerns that were raised at the public hearing at the last meeting. So at that point, I will conclude my presentation and turn it over to the board and its consultants for any concerns or other questions you may have.
Okay. Dennis?
That was a very good summary of the meeting. It's my recollection of everything that occurred there. There was one further change that I requested, and I know that Mike is looking at it, and that's a turn in the outfall pipe. It's sort of counter-current flow to the stream, and I thought, in conditions like that, I've seen debris collect at the outlet. Mike had some concern that I think that it might, of course, might have some buoyancy or something in the manhole, but I think it'll probably surcharge, any elevation change would surcharge back in, and if there's vented covers on that manhole, it'll vent there, and I don't think there'll be any problem with that. So we may have a little turning manhole, but it's strictly the drainage issue. I'll take a look at it, and that's the only other thing I think that might change on the plan that you reviewed.
Thank you. Kelly?
As the boards are aware, I did provide you with a draft resolution. I think some of the things and the changes that are being discussed tonight would be best to be included as resolutions. There was one that I missed, I just want to make sure I get it down properly. So there was a shifting the development to the west by four feet, relocating the utility pole that's in the northwestern corner of the proposed entrance. There's a four-foot-tall fence that's 50% solid fencing. Where is that fence located?
That'll be between the northeastern property line and the leading edge, front northwest, northeastern edge of building 4. So basically, right until the front yard setback.
Okay. And then, there's the six-foot solid vinyl fence, and where's that one located?
That'll terminate at building 7.
And where does it start?
It'll start at the end of the four-foot-tall fence. So the four-foot-tall fence will be there from the front property line to building 4, and then we transition to a six-foot-tall fence which connects back around to building 7.
And then, the split-rail fence with the mesh wire is from building 7, around the retaining wall, and ends at building 1?
Building 1, correct.
Okay. And then, the last one would be the additional drainage manhole and the turn in the outfall, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had those, and those could be added to the resolution.
Yeah. And just for the record, the six-foot-high fence is per the building inspector Gary Thomasberger because it's on a side yard, Dennis, of the neighbors?
Yes, Gary looked at the conditions in the field and said that would be his interpretation.
And we met with those residents, and they were in agreement with that, with the property owner?
Correct.
And Gary, so we had a three-way approval there.
That's my understanding.
And that's amongst the residents?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Kelly? You're good? Rich, thoughts, concerns, questions?
No, I'm good.
Chris?
No, good.
Sandy?
I'm good.
Robert?
I'm good.
Okay, with all that being said, being that the public hearing was closed and these were minor changes that were from the outcome of the public hearing, we can proceed with the draft resolution. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Okay. Board members, shall I proceed with the resolution?
Yes.
All right, and everyone has the one that says last revised April 28, 2018? That's the one we're working off of? Okay, this is a draft resolution of approval. Michael, you had a copy? Did you get a copy?
I did get a copy. If someone had a hard copy, I could take a look at that, that'd be great.
I don't have a hard copy.
All right, while we're getting you a hard copy there, so this is a draft resolution of approval for a lot merger, site plan, special permit, and architecture review board for Gentco Realty Group LLC. So Kelly, at this point, we're only looking at the maps that were duly noted prior to this, and then it'll be?
Right, and I'll include those that I just listed off and that the engineer just listed off as conditions, and that way you only have to deal with what you had and the public had for the public hearing.
Okay, so on page 3, everyone sees the adjusted dates on there from our attorney and the addition of number 11, which says drainage details. All right, so I'm going to jump to page 5, resolution of approval, specific conditions. Number 1, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to correct the listings of plans on sheet 1 and the numbering of each sheet to correspond to the number of sheets provided. 2, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to relocate the proposed fire hydrant to a location just north of the entrance as requested by the fire department. 3, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise stormwater management plan to show the interconnection of the seven chambers on the west side of the property. 4, the applicant shall comply with the provisions for inspection and maintenance of the storm check chambers included in the stormwater management plan. Kelly, what's number 5?
I wasn't sure if you were going to have any additional conditions, if there's a sign detail, so that can come out. It was really just a holder, a placeholder.
Well, we do need to address the sign, right? It's on the plan, it's on page [inaudible]. Everyone got the short version plans, right? I think it's the third page.
On page 7 of 11, to the bottom right.
Yeah, so it's four pages from the back. Okay. And everyone, as we discussed, the signed plan, I guess we requested, Dennis, I have on my note here from the picture, it says out by midnight. Are we going to do some kind of reflective lettering? How are we going to handle that? I guess we didn't discuss that, did we?
I don't know if we talked reflective lettering, but I think you can impose reasonable conditions on the lighting of the sign, and I don't think the applicant had any quarrel with that.
And it's shielded exterior fluorescent lighting or equal. Board members, you want it on at all hours, you want it out by midnight, you want, if it goes out at midnight, you want the lettering to be reflective or left as is. It'd be a white background with black text. And there's an optional accent color and three-color sign design, because the sign law says you have three colors, and white's not included.
Just so you know, I did, actually, I don't know if you have the latest set of plans, but I did say that the lights were to be extinguished by midnight, and it has reflective lettering.
Now that you say that, I can barely see that, but thank you.
If that's on the newest set of plans, then I can include that as a condition that they're off by midnight and they're reflective lettering.
Perfect. All right, and then you'll check with Gary what address number to give it, whether it's 6 or 8?
I will, yeah, exactly right. That was just a demonstrative number.
And then, this is off the cuff, but each building residence will be like suite 1, 2, or how are we going to do that, Dennis?
There was a condition on the ESOs that they simply wanted to have the units clearly and legibly marked with a number of some sort so that there can be some report, and they know which one to go to.
Maybe, Kelly, in that sign provision, maybe note that each unit will be, to the code, I forget if it's four or six inches, it says unit 1, unit 2, whatever the code height says, all right? And that covers the ESO's requirements. Board members, you're okay with what we discussed just now?
Yes.
Six, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a lot merger plat in a form acceptable to the village engineer sufficient to be filed in the Orange County Clerk's office and filed in the Orange County Clerk's office.
I'll delete that second part.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, it's supposed, they're supposed to submit a plan that's sufficient to be filed there, and it has to be filed there.
Okay, that's what it, and filed, okay. Gotcha. That's what I thought it meant, but. Proof of the filing of such plat shall be submitted to the village building department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Is it the village engineer or usually the attorney that does the?
The lot merger.
I would check the meets and bounds description.
So it is you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure. Number 7, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated March 15, 2018, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. 8, all light levels must be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, so no off-site glare will result. The fixtures shall meet IDA, LEED, or Green Globes criteria for nighttime-friendly or dark-skY lighting. Any wall pack fixtures shall include non-glare shields. The hours of lighting shall be the same as the hours of operation, as noted on the plans. 9, this special permit shall be subject to annual renewal by the planning board. The Village of Woodbury Building Department shall inspect the premises during the year after approval of this special permit. On or about each anniversary date of this special permit, the building inspector shall submit a report to the planning board if he identifies any violations or complaints arising from construction of this project. If the building inspector submits such a report, the applicant shall appear before the planning board at a scheduled public hearing to address any such violations and/or complaints prior to renewal of this special permit. The village building department shall thereafter continue to inspect the premises on an annual basis prior to expiration of each renewed term of this special permit to confirm compliance. If no violations or complaints are noted by the building inspector in any year, then the applicant's appearance and the need for a public hearing is waived for subsequent years in which no violation/complaint report is filed by the building inspector, and the special permit renewal is automatic. However, if there is any significant complaint or irregularity that comes to the attention of the building department or planning board in between the annual special permit renewal dates, which has not been remedied within a reasonable time, period of time after the noncompliance or complaint is brought to the attention of the applicant, then the matter shall be brought on by the building inspector for public hearing before the planning board, at which time said board shall rule upon the need to deny or modify the special permit. Anything do we need to add? We're good?
That's good. I'll add the additional conditions that we talked about tonight at the end.
For the signage, okay. Any questions or thoughts from the applicant?
No, none, thank you.
You're good with all that?
Yep.
Board members?
Good.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as written with the addition of the signage language?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Without any further discussion, do I have an appro, how does everyone vote?
Aye.
Aye. So you have five yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, planning board.
Have a good night, and thank you.
You can go now.
Thank you to the applicant. Thank you to the applicant. I want to say, yesterday's site visit with all parties involved, it was very, how do I, it was very heartwarming to see that the neighbors could work together to come to a decision that makes everyone work well. And so I want to personally thank the applicant and the engineer for doing that.
I thank the planning board for being the mediator to organize that, thank you.
You're welcome. That's what this town is about, right? Working together. Excuse me?
It was the neighborly thing.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, and I'm sure the neighbors appreciate that. Have a good night. Next item, I'm going to take these one at a time. Good night. Next item on the agenda is AT&amp;T slash new singular wireless slash Arden. Discuss recertification of an existing and previously approved co-location at the Arden House Telecommunication Tower. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 233, block 1, lot 6. So we're going to take these one, are you representing both?
Yes.
We're doing one at a time, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, for the record, your name, please?
Anthony Miranda.
Is the microphone on? You might have to.
Now it is.
Perfect. And it was Michael?
Anthony Miranda.
Oh, my lord.
Not a problem.
I'm sorry.
I've been called a lot worse, trust me. I am an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, and I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T.
Okay. All right.
So just a quick background on why we're here. As you probably know, your code imposes a requirement for wireless facilities to be recertified every five years. You actually recently updated your code to, I think, try to coalesce all those recertifications within the village at the same time, so you either have seen some or will be seeing some, I guess, in the next couple of months, because I believe the deadline is June of this year. So we filed the request with this board to recertify. And just so you know, AT&amp;T is one of the carriers on the existing tower at this location in Arden House Road. What's unique is while we have our own special use permit, which you've issued, we aren't the tower owner, so somewhat think of it like a building where there's a landlord with multiple tenants, we're one of the tenants. So we provided the information that was requested in the code, we believe, and we're here to obtain that recertification.
Thank you. And just for the record, on May 2, we, the board received a memo from Gary Thomasberger, building inspector. Please be advised that on April 27, I conducted a visual inspection of both telecommunication towers located at Arden House and on Moore Lane and found no obvious visual defects. Provided the structural analysis submitted are acceptable to our consultants, I would recommend recertification of the towers. Dennis, Kelly, which one of you would like to speak?
We worked with Kelly's office in reviewing the code. Your code under section 310-38P defines what needs to be submitted for a recertification, and it's very specific in terms of what is required. So we went down through that list and through the materials that they provided, and it's such things as the name of the holder of the special permit, the applicable title of the permit, the date the original granting of the permit was provided, whether the wireless telecommunications facilities has been moved, relocated, or otherwise altered, if it wasn't approved for such alteration, if there are any requests for waivers or relief from any kind of the requirements of the code, that the communications facilities are in compliance with the special permit, in compliance with all applicable federal, state, county, and local codes and laws and regulations. All of these items, they have certified to, and we believe that the certifications are complete and accurate. And it also indicates that the facility is subject to an inspection, annual inspection by the Woodbury Code Enforcement Officer. Gary did go out and look at the facility and did give you his report. There is one other certification that's required, and that is the recertification and the attachments to the structure are to be certified in as-bill condition and meet, and are, continue to meet all local, federal, state, and county structural requirements for loads, including wind and ice loads, and that recertification has to be by a New York State licensed professional engineer. We did review the certification that was provided in connection with this application, and it is only for the modified antenna mountings. It is not for the tower, it's not for the full structural requirements. And I realize that it's redundancy because they are a tenant on a pole, but nevertheless, that's what the code says, and just saying that these antennas are mounted properly is, in not my opinion, what the code requires. So that one, we would say, is deficient. We think that you could act on the recertification, but it would be subject to review of a structural report that satisfies this condition in your code. That's all I have.
Kelly, a question for you. On exhibit A for this particular application, if you go to the application to appear before the board, I don't have a property owner name, address, location of the property, and it's not signed on the bottom. I mean, we're not going to hold this up, but this needs to be addressed. I just noticed that. You see how it's not completed?
I thought they did somewhere else.
So the property, the tower owner signature is not on here, and the property, the property owner's name is not there, and the address should be 293 Arden House Road, Harriman, and that should be the location of the property.
Oh, there's the, I'm sorry, the property owner information is actually, the owner information's an attachment at the end, similar to the other facility, where it's, again, we don't own the tower, so it's authorization from the tower owner.
From Crown Castle?
Yep. And usually, we put.
Is that sufficient, Kelly?
That's sufficient. It is part of exhibit A, which is attached to the actual application form.
All right, as long as you say it's okay, I'm good.
Yes.
Anything else from either one of you?
I do have a couple things.
Okay.
Just so the board knows, this did not require GML 239 referrals, so it was not referred to the county. Under SECA, this is a type 2 action, so no further environmental review is necessary. And your code permits a public hearing on recertifications to be waived if you think that's appropriate.
Robert, thoughts, concerns, questions?
So, usually, most of them are in June, up for review for five years, so this takes care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, because aren't we working on?
We're trying to get them all to happen at once, because a few years ago, you actually had them coming in sporadically, so the Board of Trustees adopted a law to say all of them need to come in within a certain time period before June, I want to say it was June 1st or June 30th.
Yes.
It was in June. So you'll be getting a few of them, but as far as AT&amp;T on these two towers, that would be it for them.
Okay. Good, anything else?
I'm good, I'm good, yeah.
Sandy?
So this is for another five-year period?
Yes.
Okay, because that last sentence where it says recertified indefinitely, considering the provisions of federal law.
What section are you in?
That last page.
I think it's the last paragraph of the last letter from AT&amp;T.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, municipalities have, in many cases, accepted that, given federal law and the fact that these are operational, that they don't need to be recertified formally by a board anymore. It's a request that was put in there.
That, well, that's what I'm asking, because it says recertified indefinitely or in the alternative of five, new five-year term, so.
Your code requires it to be every five years, so while they can make the request, this board doesn't have the authority to grant that. Any recertification would be for five more years.
Okay. Anything else? Chris?
No, I'm good.
Rich?
No, I'm good.
Good, I don't have any questions. With that being said, I'll offer a motion to declare this a type 2 action?
I second it.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts, concerns on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll offer a motion that we waive the public hearing on this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Chris, was that you? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then do we need a motion to approve the five?
It would be to authorize the drafting of a resolution.
Okay. I'll offer a motion that we authorize the attorney to draft a resolution of approval. Do I have a second?
I second.
Is that you again, Chris, or Rich?
Rich.
Rich? You guys aren't using the microphones. I can't hear you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Draft resolution. Okay, so that's, all right. So we're good with that application. So we're going to jump now to AT&amp;T slash New Singular Wireless, Mar Lane. Discuss recertification of existing and previously approved co-location at the Mar Lane Telecommunications Tower. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225, block 1, lot 10.421. Gary's memo, which I read before, applies to this application as well. Okay.
Again?
Hi, how are you?
Anthony Miranda, Cuddy and Fader.
It's Anthony. I know that. I got that one.
I'm here for AT&amp;T. I will save you by saying that it's, again, a request to recertify, based on the same provision in your code, within that same timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Dennis? Same comments?
Not exactly.
Okay.
But almost all of it's the same. On the, on the items that they were complied with previously, this application also complies with. It is the structural application, again, although this structural application is much more complete. This structural application provides, or analysis provides, everything that we need. However, it includes some assumptions related to the review, which should not stand, because those assumptions, if any of the assumptions are wrong, then the analysis is, is not correct. So it's basically saying, everything I said, take it away if they haven't built it the way they're supposed to build it. This requires that they certify as-built, that it meets the structural requirements. Now, it's not unusual for the structural engineer on, on these types of applications to not be local. They may be in a remote location. But someone can take a picture of the antenna if it is. They can count the antennas. They can take a look at the antennas to make sure that the arrays are as they expect them to be on the tower. If you look at the structural analysis, it's comprehensive. I know it's 30, 40 pages in length. It, it does show, and it lists, a, a tabulation of all of the antennas that are on the tower, and there are many. And the analysis is based on those antennas being in those locations at those sizes. Without that being true, then the analysis is not, is not correct, and that's what the designer is saying. So they need to have sufficient information about the towers as-built conditions, such that they can certify, within a reasonable engineering certitude, that this is a correct analysis for that tower.
Go ahead.
Dennis, I, I don't know, this might be silly, but with the construction that's going on on 32, I notice if you go southbound, you never used to be able to, you could see maybe the top of, of that tower. Now you can see the whole thing. Does taking down of that, that land affect the wind at all? Because as far as the?
I think that the, I, we'd have to check that, but I would think that the tower designer did not take in obstructions to the wind. They're, they're required to analyze this at a certain mile per hour wind, but I don't think that they.
So there's no topography?
Consider themselves blocked by any tree or building. It's a good question. I'll take a look at the analysis, see where they had anything on that, but I, I don't believe that they took any credit for blockage of the wind.
Okay. That's it.
Kelly?
Same as the last application. This is a type 2 action under SECRE. There was no GML referral required, and the code permits you to waive the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, Chris, thoughts, concerns?
No, I'm good.
Sandy? Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
I'm good.
Okay. With all that being said, do I have a motion to declare this a type 2 action?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make, I'll offer a motion to, to waive the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So you'll be back again for the?
One more thing.
Oh, wait a minute. Yes, I got to draft the resolution. What's that? Go ahead. You want me to make that motion, or you want to make it?
No, I'll make the motion that we.
Draft the resolution?
authorize the attorney to draft, draft the resolution.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chris, for catching that on me. All right, so as soon as we get the resolutions ready, we'll, we'll let you know, and we'll get you back on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Woodbury Common. Review and discuss application submitted for proposed amendment to 2012 site plan to include various building revisions. Said property is located within the Woodbury Common Outlet Center off of Route 32, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 226, block 1, lot 1, and section 225, block 1, lot 70.2. Have a good night. And just for the record, on the application, you had put in there about the underground electrical conduits, but that was considered a field change at last month's, last week's, last meeting we had. So we're not going to be addressing that tonight, correct? Okay. Mr. Pendergast?
Well, we have to talk about these.
All right. So everyone, disregard my statement I just said.
The conduits are allowed to proceed. The conduits are proceeding either way. So what you did before remains.
Okay. All right. Hello, how are you? Long time no see.
Lou Darmenio, Price, Michelman, Darmenio for the applicant. Obviously, this is Woodbury Common. As the chairperson said, this is for several aspects, the relocation of the existing overhead power lines. We are going to go over that a little bit, dealing with the towers. There's some minor building alterations, additions, reductions, and upgraded facade, and a small modification to the approved kiosk. My only job this evening is introduce Bill Pendergast, the Vice President of Construction, which I will do in a minute, and we're hopeful answering all your questions and providing any other information you need, so that we can be ready for a hearing on, a public hearing on May 16th. So unless the board has any questions, Bill, choose.
Okay. Before Bill continues, I left myself a few notes here. On the application, the partnership, the second page of it, which goes to GML. Kelly, there's no names of officers on here. It's not going to hold us up, but there, there should be names on there, correct, for the partnership?
Yes.
All right. So, John, you'll get us a revised one with the names on there? Thank you. Also, on April 10th, we had a pre-app meeting. Myself, Dennis, Gary, oh, there's several of us. Gary, Dennis, Rick, myself, Bill, and John. We were at that meeting, so we, we briefly went over the, the, this application. On April 13th, we received a narrative. On April 23rd, we received a memo from Nelson Pope and Vores. And on April 27th, we received a memo from H2M. And I'm saying this tentatively, because I haven't had a confirmation yet. There's supposed to be an ESO meeting on Monday. Have we confirmed that yet, Dennis? We haven't?
I have not seen a confirmation. I think I have put a placeholder on my calendar.
I'll be like 10 minutes late. I'll be at work, so I'll be a few minutes late. So, but I'll be at Village Hall. Can Dennis, can you?
Monday.
Unless I get out of work early, who knows? But Dennis, can you confirm that through Maria tomorrow?
I will confirm it, but I don't see it tentatively. I see it listed at 10 a.m.
It's listed?
Well, I, I have it on my calendar listed. I can't be sure. I'll check.
Because I haven't responded to her yet, because I haven't heard any response back from, I know the lieutenant will be there from the police department on Monday. So just confirm that with her?
Sure.
Do you mind? Because I'm not going to have time tomorrow.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. All right, Bill, now you can speak.
Good evening. The first thing I'd probably start with is the underground utilities, only because it does require some site plan approval. So, just so everybody's aware, there currently is the overhead wires that run in this area and then feed up the mountain to West Point. As part of the DOT's work, they're taking from our property line all the way over to the shopping center, they're taking all that underground. The original scope of that was they were going to then come up out of the ground at the north entrance and install three 42-foot-high steel towers and a chain-link fence that was 12 feet high right at the entrance. So, they came to us, we talked about it. We've now entertained this. We're going to place the conduits underground in the ring road, come up and back by the cemetery. The poles will be in the back of the property. Then they will reconnect overhead to the overhead wires that go up the mountain. So we're taking this on as part of our work, and I think Dennis, at the last meeting, went over it with the board to allow us to start the conduit work now, prior to getting approval for the yard, which really won't happen until next year with the DOT. They're actually building that portion, but it is on our property. It does affect parking. So, our work right now is going to start Friday on the underground conduits. We have a meeting, actually, tomorrow with Gary and the water department to review the procedures for doing the work, and also to make sure that the, the water department's aware, because we are going to cross the 12-inch main that feeds the property, and we want to make sure that they're on board with us doing that. And, you know, if we have an issue, they're, they're fully aware of it. What will happen next year is we're going to end the conduits here. We're going to restore all the ring road. All that work should be done on or about July 1st. We'd like to have it done, especially before the 4th of July weekend. It may go a little further than that with striping and some other things, but again, it won't interrupt the holiday. Weekends will be unaffected. And any busy days like Memorial Day, again, we won't be working. So we'll, we'll, you know, we'll contain our work to, mostly during the week. The towers will be constructed in the back parking lot. There'll be three masts that will come up. They're steel posts. They are 42 feet high. The fence, the fence is about 12 feet high. It's barbed wire and closed, because they don't want anybody in the yard. It's high voltage electricity. It will rise up here and then reconnect back to the towers that go up the hill. This part displaces about 20 parking spaces, which, once all the poles are pulled out of the parking lot, we go back in, restore the parking. So we actually gain one space when we're done. At least, tentatively, that's the way the plan works. So, that concept is part of what we felt that needed approval, or at least the boards look at it, that these towers would be erected on the property. We did look at other locations, really not feasible for tying back into the overheads. And we really felt that having this at the front entrance was really a detriment, not only to the, our property, but also to Woodbury, having these things right on the highway at 32. Okay. Second part of the application.
Are you just going to do a brief overview, and we'll take each section at a time?
Yes. I'll do a brief overview, and I think you have a packet that's like a, it's got a bound edge on it that has, I'll kind of use that as the guide. We have the larger examples of it here, if you need to see it. Basically, what this project involves is, I'll start at the top. Building 1 renovation, this really is just an interior split of an existing space, but we are changing the facade completely, and we are, there's a small site plan change that occurs to allow stairs to allow access to the new storefront. Right now, there's a single tenant in here. It's going to be divided into four tenants. In order to do that, we have to change the grades here to allow storefront access into those tenants. Second one is building 4 expansion. Right now, this is currently the Gucci space. It's small additions onto that space to increase their area. There is a fence here currently that is a gated access, not for ESOs. It's really more for the mall's operation and like snow removal. But it also, when we talked about it with Gary, we kept a 20-foot path through here, so in the event that a fire truck or somebody else got trapped in here during an event, they could get out. Again, it's not part of the ESO path, but we, we kept that 20-foot-wide easement through there, so that, again, in the event that there was an issue, we could get people in and out of that service court here. Third, I'll go to the kiosk. This is a, a location that we had originally looked at for a kiosk. I think we've been before the board and had a plan developed where we're going to build eight kiosks throughout the center. We've built six of them. This tenant wanted a larger kiosk. It's a nice location for it. It's outside of Calvin Klein. The horse is here. The fireplace is here. It's kind of a nice seating area. It's out of the ESO pass. What we're asking the board to do is, instead of allowing us to build eight, we're going to reduce it to seven and double the size of this one versus the other ones. So we're just basically doing a two, two-unit kiosk in one location. It'll still limit it to the original eight square footage, the calculations that we had. The next one is building 20. Again, this is highlighted more in your packets. Currently, Faragamo's in here and the bathrooms that are connected to the old food court that still exists. There's currently a tenant in the old food court that is going to be leaving at the end of the month. So the goal here was to take this building, tear it down, and redevelop this footprint, increases the GLA by about 800 square feet, and it reorganizes the building that's currently there, takes out the old bathrooms that are here that are really rundown. They're probably 20 years old. They need to be replaced. So then, the last part of this application, and I'll walk through the rest of it on the smaller sheets, we had torn down most of the old food court in this area, building A and building B. We couldn't complete that tear-down and redevelopment, because the tenants stayed and they refused to leave. So we're now hoping that they're still going to be going by the end of the month, and we're going to continue and finish this building. At the same time, we'll build new restrooms here, instead of trying to shoehorn them back into the older building in the older section. On the previous applications, and again, I'll go through this in a minute, in the previous application, way back when this was approved, the bathrooms were going to be in the back of this building. You actually had to walk down a service court to get to them. Now you'll have an interior hallway that'll connect to the bathrooms. So that's kind of an overview of the, the areas that we're approaching for approvals.
Thank you. For simplicity's sake, I want to do one by one, or do you have a general overview, Dennis, that you want to give us?
No, I think you can hear from the applicant. I mean, we, we got into some technical questions and whatnot, but I think the overview is what the board wants. I'll go through some of the items.
If you have, if you all have this booklet.
Yep.
It's probably the easiest thing to follow. It's mostly just a compilation of all those small, the larger plans. Page 2 is, again, just an overview of the areas that we're approaching. Page 3 is the building 1 renovation. Again, this is not really an expansion of the building. It's a redemise. It requires architectural improvements. Those architectural improvements will be consistent with the, the district that it's in, which is Adirondacks. There is a small site plan change. We're adding a seat wall and a couple of stairs that we, so it'll allow access to the five tenants that we're going to have in the space.
While you're on that one, Bill, this is one of the areas where we had talked about providing some clarification. There's some drainage that runs through here, and it looks like it might be trapped, and I, I'm sure they're going to design for it, but it's not clear to me from this plan, because I think they, they were trying to show something on top of another plan here. I think maybe we need that, an engineering plan in this area, so we can see exactly. I think maybe we need that, an engineering plan in this area so we can see exactly what's going on, and make sure the seat is high enough for a sitting wall and not low enough to create a trip hazard. And if it is, then we'll have to, you'll have to mark it with railing or do something else.
Yeah, the, in general, the seat wall is consistent with a lot of the seat walls we've built throughout the center. So, if you've been at the center and you see some of the seat walls we've done, the overall drop here from the existing hardscape to the new hardscape is seventeen inches. The seat wall would be eighteen to twenty-four inches high. So, again, the fall protection isn't required by code, but again, we'll have the seat wall so that people can sit really on almost either side of the wall, a little high on one side, but a little, you know, less on the other. It's pretty consistent with everything we've done throughout the center and provided seat walls. And when a railing is required by code, then obviously the railings are added. And I have PSNS looking at this to give Dennis some more detail of the drainage. Page four is just really the floor plan of that space. The area in white is the area that's being subdivided. There is one space that is going to be storage for tenants. Again, it's counting, still counting as GLA, but it is a space that only has rear access.
Is that, it says zero-nine-four-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Has access to the rear.
That's, so that's the storage area for all?
For someone.
Okay. So, to gain access, they, the store owners would have to, they would have to go outside, go to this section and do their work from the outside?
Again, there, it's consistent with the storage that we have approved in the past. Again, the tenants have access to it. It's off the service area, so they have direct access to a service road or a service access point.
All right. Board members, you have any questions? So, it's one store going into four?
It's one store going into four, and then page five is the elevation of that space.
Bill, is this the Neiman Marcus space?
Yes.
It was in the newspapers. It was in the record. Yeah.
Yeah, typically, we don't say names, but.
Sorry, I said it. I said it.
Yes, Chris, it was in the paper.
It was in the paper. We're usually sensitive to tenant needs. So, that's, that's the building one redemise and basically architectural changes.
Architectural changes go with that design of that neighborhood?
Absolutely. Follows the same materials and makeup of the Adirondack District.
Okay.
Okay? It's adjacent to the Welcome Center, so that's as a point of reference. It's right next to the Welcome Center. The next one is page six. This is the current Gucci space. The additions, there's one addition that faces the courtyard. It's the little bump in the front. Then there's two smaller additions. Those are pretty much behind the fence area, and they're not accessible to the courtyard. The fence will be relocated, but again, we kept the twenty-foot path through that area so that in the event that there is an emergency and we had to get somebody out of the back, but it's also there for the convenience of the center. In order to maintain the center, they can get in and out of there, snow removal, things like that. It's not meant for deliveries. It's not meant for anything else. Deliveries come in by Market Hall to that service area. Page seven is just the floor plan of the space, and it shows the radiuses from the other buildings so that we maintain the twenty-foot access.
Dennis, I know when we met, you had some concerns about this one. Anything you want to add to this?
This one?
Was it this one?
I don't recall having any about building four.
No, I think it was on building twenty.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I just want to look at my notes.
Page eight is just the elevations, and again, it's consistent with the current building that's there. It's the same colors as the building that's there. So, again, there's no change other than adding a few doors and windows.
One of the things I would note is, on the colors, you're getting the representation from the applicant, that they're going to go with the same color palettes that they have. Because if you look at some of these depictions that they have, it's just that the color copiers are off, I think. It's not exactly.
And which, is this Adirondacks also?
This is the corner of Adirondacks and Hudson Valley.
Okay.
It's more Adirondack.
Okay. Now, this right-side elevation with that long wall.
Eighty percent of that's behind the fence.
It's behind the fence, okay.
Correct.
That's.
That's service court.
Anyone have any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay.
You don't want to see all that stuff.
All right.
Page nine is building twenty, expansion, and building B, phase two reduction. So, on the left-hand side of this sheet is the existing Faragamo, and it was going to be, this just shows what was approved in 2012. The restrooms are going to be behind that building, and building B was a different shape and didn't have the restrooms attached. If you go to page ten, this is now the new configuration of building B and building twenty. Building twenty has an expansion out the back. It has a reduction in the front. There's an alleyway that goes between them, which is to allow access to building A. This was part of the original approval. And then, building B, phase two, we've reduced the footprint of it because we've reallocated GLA to other locations, but we've also tried to push it back from what is Torrey Birch now. It's a fairly tight access through there. It's a very narrow courtyard, so the thought was to push the building back more in line with the Faragamo building, giving more room in that courtyard than it currently has. And then, the restrooms are attached through a hallway as well. Page eleven is just more detail for Dennis's purpose and shows some grading and utility relocations. If he needs more information, we'll get it to him. Page twelve is the Faragamo building as it will be when we're done. Again, it's going to be totally demolished. Then, there's going to be three small tenants. Faragamo will then take a portion of the building with the expansion. There is a, as Dennis noted in his comments, there's a hallway kind of behind this. That is access to one tenant, and the existing electric meters are there, so we didn't opt to try to move all of that, because it feeds the whole other building. So, we left that alleyway in there. It's actually covered. It's part under the roof. The only, there's only one tenant that needs access there. It's a little over six feet wide, which is more than adequate for the tenants to have service into.
They use that for what, deliveries?
Deliveries.
And do those doors swing only ninety, as shown, or do they swing back to the wall?
It's actually only a single door. The drawing shows a double. It's only a single.
Does it swing back to the wall and not block the way?
It swings the opposite. It swings away from it.
Oh, wait, okay.
So, again, the recess was left there for the most part, because the electric meters and all the services there for the entire building that runs down the sheet that you don't see. Page thirteen is really the concept elevations of the space. And again, it's in the Hudson Valley District, and the material palette that was approved for Hudson Valley will continue. Page fourteen is building B. The left hand shows the 2012 footprint, and the right hand shows the current footprint. And you can see the difference in the size and the shape of at least the tenant spaces. It's kind of a compilation. It kind of moved from 2012 to 2015, and now we're at 2018. So, the spaces got smaller, and the bathrooms are now relocated. It's an interior hallway. The distance of travel to the bathrooms is fifty-two feet. The bathrooms next to Saks Fifth Avenue are about a hundred and twenty feet. This is a much shorter hallway. It gives covered access to the bathrooms, where in the original approval, you actually had to walk outside and down an alleyway to get to the bathrooms. This is fairly common for most of our centers, where the bathrooms are kind of located at the back of a house, and there's a nice pleasant hallway that everybody walks in and, you know, can stand in out of the rain and go to the restrooms.
I just want to know for the board, that's not unusual, they say, and I know I've been down to the ones in Saks. If you've been to the bathrooms in Saks, it is a very long hallway. This is a long hallway going to the back to the bathrooms. It's not unusual for them, but I just want you to understand that if you went in there, you'd be thinking, this is a long hallway to go down, and long, narrow hallway to go down to a bathroom. Okay.
Page fifteen is really the elevations, and you can see the phase one and phase two. Again, it's just a continuation of the existing color scheme that's already started. Half of this building is already built. We're now going to complete the other half. This requires the total demolition of what's remaining of the old food court and a lot of site area, perhaps behind the building and in front of the building, to marry back into what we created a couple of years ago. The next plan is sixteen. This was the original kiosk plan. The green dots are the ones that we have built. The red dot is one that we are now going to forego building. The yellow dot is the one we're asking for the double-sized kiosk for, and the blue dot is the information booth, which is another part of this application. Page seventeen is basically the kiosk location. Again, it's in a nice area where there's lots of seating. It's out of the pedestrian path, and, you know, it's a nice place for this type of kiosk. It's a retail, not a food, kiosk, but it actually, they're selling prepared foods in it currently. Then, page eighteen is just the size of it, and nineteen is just the elevations, again, consistent with all the kiosks that we've built to date. We've gone over all these, Gary, they have full sprinkler, they have water sewer, they have everything available to them, and the materials used are consistent, again, with the district, and this is the Saratoga District. The last item, which is page twenty, is currently the information booth that is in Saratoga, as you come from the parking deck. It's fairly large for the use that it really gets, so the application is to convert this back to retail using the GLA that we have available and convert this into a retail kiosk. Again, the shape and texture of it is going to be fairly similar. We'll probably replace some of the windows and the doors, you know, more in line with a retail kiosk, but again, the overall scheme of it stays the same. It'll just be developed into a retail kiosk instead of an information booth. That's all I have.
Dennis?
All right, well, I'm not going to, we talked about a few of the items. I'll mention some. I'm not going to mention everything. I think that they'll address them as they typically have, is a five-page memo on this. I might as well deal with the last one. That's the information booth. This is the way it's depicted now. They want to convert it to something else. They want to change the windows. They want to change it around. So, like everything else, I assume that there's going to be some kind of a plan for how you, what you want to do?
Yes.
All right, so that should be submitted, and that should be available, frankly, before the, before you have a public hearing?
Not a problem.
Okay. In terms of the GLA, the GLA, just for the board, is modified somewhat by some of the things that happened in the common. They have, they made some alterations. They had building B. They came back to you before for a reduction in building B because the tenant wasn't going to leave. They've done a number of things. And again, here, we've changed some. We're going to add for Woodbury, for the information booth. It's a complicated matter. What you've done in the past is you've authorized Gary and I to review it. We would do that, and we would report back to you whether they're, meet their requirements for GLA. In your previous action, when you reviewed the unchanged 2012, plus some amendment that went along the way, you made a determination that all GLA was exhausted, that that plan represented everything that they were entitled to under that seeker action. It's not that they can't go for more. It's what triggers another seeker action. Right now, they're saying that they're going to stay within the umbrella of that previous approval, that they won't expand the GLA beyond that. Gary and I will check that. Bill has prepared a summary sheet of all of the retail areas and the leasing areas. We had one from the previous review that formed the model. This is an offshoot of that. It shows the changes that have been made. So, Gary and I will review that, and we'll report back to you whether, in fact, they're staying within that umbrella. It's close, but that's where we are. We knew we were very close, because we were right up to the, to the limit that was authorized. And someday, they'll, they may be back in, as they've talked to you about, for other things, and that would trigger a seeker action. That is a revised seeker action, as opposed to, I think they're looking for confirmation under the previous seeker action, reaffirming your seeker action that was previously taken, because they're not, not asking for additional GLA. We talked about the booth. In terms of the parking, we had some questions on some of the parking, because what they've done is they had the original plan. They overlaid it on the 2012 improvement, and now they're revising that, and I think it's getting a little busy in the area. We identified that. They're going to show us, I think, on an expanded detail, just to make sure that some of those parking spaces actually work. There's an ESO meeting scheduled. We've recommended that we get a, you have an ESO route, and there are things that you're changing, some of which may fall along the ESO route, some of which may be outside that route. So, we'd like to get that plan, and that should be, hopefully, you can have that available for the meeting on Monday. Okay? We talked about that retaining wall. I'd like to get some information on that, because it, I'm familiar with the center. Been around the center. Most of the walls work, the seating walls. This wall has two different elevations approaching it. I'm concerned about the drainage to make sure that that works, and also the fact that on the low side, not the high side, the high side I'm not worried about. It's the low side being very low and a trip hazard, and we just got to make sure that's not the case, because it is in a walking path. Let's see. We already, oh, we'd like to get a revised kiosk location plan when you're done, because the plan that you have now shows things that are going in, things that are coming out. It shows the information booth. We should have the identification of all of those. Architectural reviewed. There are a number of other comments in here that we don't really need to go over unless the board has any questions. The last one, though, is on the marketplace, there's a leasable area that you've indicated. Don't know exactly how that's going to work within the marketplace, and if you have information on that, if you can provide it, it would be helpful.
Yeah, this came up at the meeting when there's been some pop-up uses within Market Hall. They don't particularly fall within the requirements of GLA, but the conversation that we had at the pre-development meeting was, we should call them GLA. So, what we've basically done is said, we're going to allocate two hundred square feet of the remaining GLA that we have to these uses so that the operations people can have these things happen without Gary having issues, which I understand, because they don't pop up for a month, they pop up for a year and a half. So, they are taking up floor space. The issue there is they're not impacting the seating that is required. We've pushed the seating around and maintained clearances, so I don't know if there's a plan. We can give you a plan of what's there currently and show the seating, and that would probably be the best thing to do. It may change, again, we were just going to allocate two hundred square feet of GLA so that when the operations people went to Gary and said, we want to put this over here, that at least he knew that it was counting as part of the GLA, and it couldn't exceed two hundred square feet in its use.
Okay, just to avoid some nebulous approval, which then creates problems later on for Gary, for the board, for you perhaps, there should be some clear plan that says, this is what it might look like, and then how it might amorph.
Okay.
If you show a plan and say, but this can move in a different location, or it could be split, that would be okay, but we, I think we should understand what we're talking about.
Okay, we can do that. It's not a problem.
Okay, and just a couple of other, maybe, general items. One is that we would require that we have a standard condition that we usually have, that none of the improvements create ponding or ponding problems, that drainage adequately be handled. That's because after you build something like this, and there's a lot of hardscape, if you put a seating portion in, or you put a wall or something like that, it can trap water. They'll need to provide drainage for that, so we don't have a ponding, which then becomes an icing problem. And the last thing is, with respect to construction procedures, this is an active center, very active center, as you know. There are people going to be there, both customers and employees during the construction. They have been very good about that. We had, you had conditions in your previous action that required areas that had overhead work or, or any type of work that might cause problems to the public or. work or any type of work that might cause problems to the public or could be a safety hazard. Did it be barricaded in a reasonable manner so that the patrons would know where the construction zones are and to stay out of them? The shoppers will make a beeline for the door and no matter what's in the way, unless they're channeled around it. And so that would be a condition we would recommend be carried. And unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
I just have a quick question. Some of the construction, will you be doing it at nighttime to prevent impact to the facility?
Most of the demolition work that is going to be outdoor demolition, not interior demolition, will be done at night.
Okay.
It's too risky to do it during the day, anyway.
Okay. I'm sorry. Kelly, you have anything?
I just want to weigh in on one thing that Dennis was talking about as far as Secra. Before you make any secret determination, I just think you need the memo from Dennis and Gary reviewing the GLA to make sure it falls within what you previously did. And that was it.
Okay. Robert?
Yes?
You have any questions concerned?
The information booth is totally eliminated. There's no substitute for that?
We have discussed doing a substitute. Again, if the board's preference is that we provide something in that area, we would entertain that. What we would probably ask for would be that it be somewhat flexible in terms of its location. It would definitely not be in the ESO path. It would marry up to the existing architecture. And, you know, we would get Gary's blessing on his location, but it would probably be a much reduced size, something maybe like eight by eight or 10 by 10, somewhere in that area. And it may be portable so that if it's really bad weather or if it's like in February and March, when very few people would use it, you know, we might be able to pull it away. That's one thought. If it needs to be more permanent, we can obviously do that as well. Our only caveat would be, instead of coming back to the board to show them the architecture, would be, say, we would put something there and it would, again, be consistent with the district and would be suitable for, you know, habitation by one or two employees. And we would go over all that with Gary and make sure that he was okay with it from a building code and, you know, that it met up with the district requirements.
Now, it's always manned by one or two employees currently?
Typically, there's one employee there. And the thing is, it's 350 square feet for one employee. It's a lot of space for one employee. So, you know, we are -- the center is in the midst of doing some other information locations that are portable. So that's one option that, you know, that we would entertain, you know, or look at with the board as well, whether it's a permanent or a portable location.
If it's portable, that's one thing. If it's going to be permanent, my recommendation is that you be shown the location on a site plan. It can't be just wherever they decide to put it. So I think if it's going to be permanent, it should be before the board. Even if you want to allow some flexibility in its location or flexibility in its size, that's okay. But it should be on someplace where you know if it's going to be permanent. But if it's portable and you just set the parameters out of the emergency ESO way, not blocking pedestrian movement, not blocking a doorway, you can set parameters for that.
Now, would it, basically, the information booth have not only information about Woodbury Common Stores, but also local attractions? Is that what it usually asks?
Whatever they currently would give information on would be what they would continue to give information on. You know, I can't say it's going to be stocked with, you know, 50 brochures of local businesses because we already have that currently in the Welcome Center and in Market Hall. You know, those are our two large information centers. The Welcome Center being the largest of them because that's where all the tour buses and all the buses come in. So there are going to be 50 racks of brochures, not likely in that small unit, but they're not currently there. They hand out information of whatever they're requested of currently.
Oh, sorry. Basically, it's about the stores that are within the complex?
Yeah. They come, they get maps, they can buy coupon books, they can, you know, they can check into the VIP, they can, you know, do whatever they can at the other locations. This is just a remote location.
Okay. Thank you. Good.
Anything else? Sandy?
I just have a couple of things. As far as the laying of the conduit, what kind of demolition of that ring road are you looking at? Is it going to take out one lane?
Currently, it should only take out one lane. There will be a section that we're going to go over with Gary that goes -- it's down. There's a section down here where the existing sewer pump station is, and it's in this part of the ring road that requires two vaults to be placed in the road that are 20 feet long and eight feet deep to pull the wires through from Orange and Rockland. We'll be pulling the primary cable through those manholes. There's two of them. That will require closing that road for a stretch. It will be very similar to what we did when we expanded the center and we had to reroute traffic. We will then reroute traffic through the parking lot and through other areas to get them around that location. It'll be for probably about two weeks that that would be down. Again, we're going over this tomorrow with Gary, just to make sure he's aware of it. And also then make sure that the ESOs are aware of that closure, just like we've had in the past when we had to close parts of the ring road and reshuffle traffic around. We'll do the same thing here.
So does it -- does it all get dug up at one time or does it go in phases?
No. It'll get dug up in phases. What they basically do is you dig, you put the conduits in, you have to pour concrete around the conduits, then you have to restore the road, and then you can continue to move. It's not like we're going to dig up the whole road in one shot. It's going to be dug up in sections that we can work on in a week.
And how is traffic -- how does traffic know? How are they directed through there during construction?
We'll have barricades up when it's at night, and there'll be cones to divide the lanes up. During the day, there'll be flagmen, and there'll be people out there directing traffic.
Okay. Because, I mean, I'm sure you know the mess on 32 right now. It's like a...
Yeah. The good thing about this is it's in the road where it's a -- most of it's at its widest points, and there are three lanes. We can generally work in one lane, except for that area where we have to put the vaults in. We'll work in one lane. As we work in one lane, then we'll just continue down through. We'll have traffic control. Again, we've done this for the last five years of routing people, routing traffic. You know, we make sure we have the right people there to get them around.
Yeah. Just 32 was much nicer than...
Yeah.
But this is going to be -- that's why this -- that's why they have to have the meeting with Gary, and he has -- Gary has to set the parameters.
Right.
And I know we talked about this at the pre-app meeting with the lane closures and everything. So they have room up there to divert traffic into the main section and exit -- traffic can exit around. So there's enough of a loop around that they can work with. Where the buses go, they can come in that way and then loop around and exit. So we covered all that with Gary, but I'm sure Gary will have a plan.
The good thing is, we have a much better road system than we did five years ago, and we can really route traffic very easily and buses and everything else fairly easily. Again, the work should be predominantly during the week. Friday is cleanup day, and then for the weekend, for the most part, we'll be out of the way.
Okay. And then the other thing, just with some of these spaces that are going from one to four, does that do anything to the parking, Dennis, as far as?
It's a...
I know it's the same GLA, but if...
They're maintaining the number of stalls. They're adding one stall, as I understand it, right?
Correct. Well, once we redo the utility swap, we actually end up with one extra stall. But all these swaps and changeouts are all within the GLA requirements, and all the parking that's currently on site is based on that GLA.
GLA. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Rich?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm just going to go back to what -- you heard my comments about the information booth becoming retail in that section there. I mean, I go by that. On the weekends, there's usually possibly up to two, three people in there, and I know people do use that as an information booth. So you're going to share it with retail? Is that what you're saying? Or is it going to be just completely retail? Because I had...
That space -- that space will become completely retail, and then if we need to provide an alternate for information in that area, that can be done.
All right. Because depending on which way we go with that, I really want to look at that, Dennis, because where that kiosk is for the information booth, there are numerous chairs and tables that are placed in between the kiosk and the water fountain, and then you have the stand-up signs. An emergency vehicle, we knew could never go through there, but a police car or an ambulance to come from where the parking deck is, come to in through there, it's narrowing down with signage and flower pots that are there now and seating area. So that's maybe something that we have to take a look at with a visit, just to go down there, just look at that for retail.
We could talk to the ESOs about it on Monday, too.
Yeah. We can review that with them. When you say retail, retail, or food retail, is it going to be food? I mean, because it makes a difference. If it's going to be food, then people are going to be sitting there.
Currently, it will be retail, but that doesn't mean that five years from now, it won't be something else. But again, they all count as GLA, whether they're food or not.
All right. And Dennis, you'll check those numbers with Gary to make sure that there's enough GLL, GLA, excuse me, for that to become retail section.
Yes. I will.
Because that's my only...
Well, we're looking for a final summary. Bill brought us a temporary tabulation, and I think he's working on a final one now. When we get that, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Anyone else have any thoughts, concerns about this proposal? Now, you didn't -- who said they're going to be on the May 16 meeting? Did you say you were going to be on the May 16 meeting? My agenda is, I can't promise because I've got so much. I got to look at it because I've already put a couple of things. We have two resolutions. We've got an application. We've got to review a law. So I'll do my best because with that being said, to the board members, May 16 is our next meeting. Two weeks after that is May 30. Being that there's three, there's five weeks in May, on June 6, a couple of us are not going to be here, so I'm not going to have a quorum for June 6 meeting. I'd like to cancel June 6 meeting and go into May 30, which is, gives us a two-week separation like we're used to.
That's fine.
Do you have a problem with that?
No, no problem.
Because I'll have to make a motion.
Yeah.
Memorial Day is the Monday before.
28.
It's that week. It's after Memorial Day.
Where are you going?
I'm not telling you where I'm going. You might scare me.
We could do May 30.
All right. Well, that's -- well, we'll see. But I want to see how the board is because June 2, June 6, we're probably going to -- we're going to cancel that meeting, and I have to put a request in for this room by the end of the week, just to make sure no one else takes it. Because I had to fight off the Village Board last week not to use it.
But does -- you know for sure two people won't be here?
Possibly three. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep. You going to be around for May 30?
Yeah.
Rich, you going to be around for May 30?
Yep.
Sandy?
Yes.
Robert? All right. With that being said, I'd like to offer a motion that we cancel our June 6 meeting and in its place, schedule May 30 as our meeting. There's a week between them, so...
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dennis? Oh, Gail, will you be around? If not, we'll worry about that. Jeff, you'll be around?
30.
The 30th instead of the 6th. All right? If not, we'll work you two of you out. You're good over there. Dennis, you'll let Maria know so she can make the necessary arrangements and notices? All right. So we'll try to get you on for...
The 30th.
The 30th. Yeah. Because I have a couple that I already promised for the 16th already, which I have to -- I have a large pending agendas for the next couple meetings. All right.
Is that for a public hearing? We're not there yet.
Oh, we're not a public hearing for -- no, that's just to review everything. We're not having a public hearing. Do you want a public hearing for the 30th? Is that what you guys want? Dennis, are we anywhere near there?
Yeah. We can list it for a public hearing, but you're going to need to make a motion to schedule the date of the public hearing. You can do that now.
Okay.
If you do it on the 16th, I don't know if there's going to be enough time for Maria to get the notice out.
Probably not because there's a holiday between...
So you can do it now. She's got enough time. If they balk, if they can't get the materials in in time, then, you know, we won't advertise it and we'll just cancel it.
All right. So before I go to that point, board members, are you comfortable enough to have a public hearing on the 30th for Woodbury Common? Do you have enough information?
Yes.
Yes.
Sandy?
I don't know.
You don't know? We'll get -- whatever information you need, we'll get it from Bill. How's that? Are you going to be submitting any additional information to us?
Yes. Well, not additional, just the support.
The support Dennis's report and the analysis with the GLA.
Not a half for Dennis, but he also requested that we give you an elevation of the information because it's going to change. We're going to review.
So we're going to get that. We're going to get the ESO report.
We'll get the ESO report. That's why we're having a meeting on Monday.
And that will all be to us.
That's Dennis's -- that's Dennis's responsibility to take the minutes.
As my understanding is, the public hearing is supposed to be held at the earliest possible time to get...
Right. To get information.
Information to the board so that you can consider it in your deliberations. You can still ask for additional materials.
Right.
But you want to have a substantive application for the public. I think that you have the bones of this application clearly submitted. Now, we're looking at some other details. I think that the public would have, should see, and you should see, the information booth in its final form. Other than that, they've given you everything in its final form, but we've looked -- we're looking for details on that. So, you know, it's your call, though.
Now, okay. Landscaping, do I need anything from our landscaper planner on this application? Or are we pretty good with this? There's really no -- I'm just asking because...
There's a theme that's established in Woodbury Common right now. I don't know that it's going to change dramatically from this. This is mostly hardscape and building changes. They're doing something around the front of the structures. If you wanted input, that's up to you.
All right. Let me -- I'll think about that. All right. All right. So with all that being said...
Do I make a proposal, public hearing?
Yes. Why don't you do that?
I'd like to make a motion. We propose a public hearing for the May 30 meeting.
May 30? I'll second you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Now, with that being said, did I make a motion that we changed the dates? Did we vote on that or not?
You did.
We did.
It was by Sandy, seconded by Robert.
Okay, so that's, that's done. Anything else with this application? Kelly?
Not at this time.
All right, because I'm not even gonna ask for a draft resolution.
No. Well, we would need, honestly, to put that together, you need, and I would need the information that they're gonna be providing.
So, you're okay with that, gentlemen? We're not gonna have a resolution that night?
What I can do is, if the board wants, I can try and put one together, and kinda put in some placeholders, like I did with the sign detail on the first one, for where I think that you may have potential conditions, and it would, obviously, I can't get it to you until I get the information from them. So, once that comes in, then I can send it out.
All right. Can you have...
So, as long as it's emailed to me as well.
This is, this is, all right, so I'm gonna...
We'll have everything addressed within a week.
I was gonna say, can you have all this by next Wednesday to Dennis, which is a week earlier than what we normally need?
Yes.
And as long as...
If they could also email it to me as well.
Email it to Kelly and to Dennis, and then we'll work on it that way. So, I'll offer a motion that we have a draft, draft resolution prepared for this application for the May 30 meeting, so that at least they can start working on it, because you're gonna need time to pull, pull it together.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Now, I presume that, all right, I'm not gonna presume anything, forget what I said. All right, so we'll see you on May 30 for a public hearing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Gentlemen in the back, I know you've been sitting here patiently, and I know you're not on the agenda. Do you wanna come up to the front for a moment of my time? Because it is 9 o'clock, just... No, then go ahead. We're not gonna be discussing any, I don't have my file with me.
George Lithgow, Jacobovskiy Kuvets, Jason Pinngaro, the engineer.
I know, I know, I know you requested to be on this agenda tonight.
We have two, I hope, simple requests. We have been asked to appear at the 16th. Jason has a conflict. He, he may be able to make it very late. What we would hope the board is prepared to do is basically what you did for the applicant before, a draft, draft resolution for consideration of conditional final approval. And we would like you, if you are so inclined, to refer the recommendations of the pedestrian safety study that was done in December 2016 to the Village Board, because we would like to discuss with them how those recommendations could be implemented, and if...
This is Aon, this is Aon Hotel, I'm sorry.
We come in only the even-numbered years. We were here in 2016.
Kelly, can you?
We are back.
What I can say is, as you noted, this application was not on the agenda. I'm not prepared to discuss it, I'm not prepared to tell you where this project is right now. I actually haven't looked at it in months. But what I think we might be able to do is, if Jason's able to make it late, maybe we can put them last on the agenda, and they can keep in contact to see where he is, and then maybe he'll be able to make it by when they're actually up. I think that...
And you did move the next meeting up one week closer, so if it's not the 16th, it'll be the 30th.
Right, so it could be, we could put you on, because as it's standing right now, the 16th is getting to be quite heavy, and I can't do 11 o'clock meetings anymore. It's, it's not reasonable to all of us.
There's one public hearing, and I think we have three other items.
And we have the two resolutions for the, for the, and I know we put someone else on there, too. So, we can put you, we can put your application on last, and if you can't make it, we can put you, push you to the 30th, and we'll put you...
I will be here.
All right.
So, what, my hope was that with a, at least preparing the bones of a draft resolution for consideration...
I, I can't even, because we haven't even scheduled a public hearing.
You have had a public hearing on the site plan. It was February...
I don't, see, I don't have my file before me.
Well, trust me, I'm...
I can't, all right.
We, we will be happy to provide the...
I, I think...
Yeah, Kelly, I can't do a draft.
I think the best the board can do right now, because nobody here is actually prepared for this application, is to suggest putting them last on the agenda, and deal with it on the 16th. I honestly can't tell you where this is. Again, I haven't looked at it in months, and if that's the request, that's something that you can handle in two weeks. And just, I mean, the applicant knew they weren't on tonight, they are making this request.
Right.
It's the best I can offer.
And if we have, and if you're here for the 16th, two weeks later, we can have a resolution, once we review everything. And to be quite honest with you, the file, as Kelly stated, I haven't looked at the file, and I gotta refresh my memory about the whole application, the public hearing, I have to review it myself. And as counsel stated, I need, I need their input on this, so...
Well, we were hoping that that would be, discussion would have been had tonight, but...
Well, my agenda was set, and I couldn't put you on, I just, I just, I couldn't do